Hulu, Netflix, Peacock, Amazon Prime, Disney Plus. Streaming media services change not only people's viewing habits, but also change the dynamics facing WCTV. Content is tailored to specific viewer interests, which for the viewer is a good thing. It allows people to cut the cord and eliminate programming they neither watch or need. An unforeseen consequence is that it impacts WCTV in a very challenging and costly way.
WCTV is funded almost entirely by a percentage of cable company's revenues based off the amount of cable subscribers we have in Wilmington. In short, less cable subscribers equals less revenue for WCTV. If you utilize any of WCTV's resources by creating your own program or watching local meetings and sports online and you are not a cable subscriber, there is a way to help. I hope you will consider making a donation so that we can continue delivering these programs and more to you. For those of you who have made a donation, I thank you. We do receive these and we are very appreciative.
May 26, 2021 School Committee Meeting. Tracy, everyone is in attendance. The Wilmington School Committee will enter into executive session pursuant to MGL-C30A-S21A23 to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. Unit A negotiations FY22 administrator salary range. Wilmington School Committee will return to regular session following the executive session and will do a roll call vote. Mrs. Newhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Fennelly?
Yes.
Mr. Samaha?
Yes.
Mrs. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Ragsdale?
Yes.
Mrs. Plowman?
Yes.
Jen Bryson?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening and welcome to the May 26, 2021 School Committee Meeting. We are just returning from executive session. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three on our agenda is public comment. There is no public comment this evening. Item four, we have approval of items by consensus. Approval of minutes, May 12, 2021. Is there a motion? Mrs. Burns, seconded by Mr. Samaha, all in favor? That's unanimous. We have acceptance of a donation of $1,075 from a fundraiser sponsored by a senior parent group to the Wilmington High School class of 2021. Thank you very much for that. Is there a motion? Mrs. Burns, seconded by Mrs. Plowman, all in favor? Thank you. Item C, acceptance of Wilmington Educational Foundation technology grants. Mr. Ragsdale?
So Wilmington Educational Foundation requests to award $2,638.78 for the following 2021 technology grants to Gary Nicholson, Wildwood sped teacher in the Strides Program, three iPads with accessories for $942, to Michelle Leveque, West 4th grade teacher, an iXL subscription for $449, Robin Berry, Batwell and West music teacher, two iPads and $100 gift card for apps accessories and accessories, $947.79, and to Suzanne Kroll, West and Middle School speech language, the pathologist, everyday speech subscription for $299.99.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Mrs. Plowman, seconded by Mrs. Newhouse, discussion? No. Okay. All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you very much. We have some warrants, G440, R227, L81, 82, 83, 84, 85, and FS55, 56, 57, 58. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mr. Samaha, seconded by Mr. Ragsdale, all in favor? That is unanimous. And finally, payroll ending 5/26/2021. Is there a motion? Mrs. Burns, seconded by Mrs. Plowman, all in favor? And that is unanimous. Next, we have our Senior Student Representative Report and Prom Update. We have Senior Owen Sarette with us this evening.
Hello, welcome. So you can sit right there. And you are providing an update for us. Thanks for being here. We've missed our senior update, so we appreciate you coming in tonight.
I'm glad I can give you an update.
All right.
So we recently had prom, which was roughly two weeks ago, I think. And we had 120 students buy tickets, which was roughly like 65% of the class. And we were relatively nervous that not everyone was going to go to prom because there was a lot of issues with the masks and everything, which was a problem. But we were very fortunate to get Castleton, which was a very, very nice venue in New Hampshire. And everyone had a lot of fun. It was a very good time. The food was great, if you're wondering. Steak, pasta, bread. It was great. The first hour, we went to prom. People took pictures. They interacted with everybody. And then we had the meal and then we danced. And it was a lot of fun. And that definitely picked up the senior mood because we haven't had a real event that brought all the seniors together like all year. So we were very fortunate to have that. And then towards like beginning of hybrid, we had the spelling bee. And the spelling bee was me and three other of my friends started it. And then we had like a teacher versus teacher spelling bee. We had roughly like 13 teachers sign up. And the main goal for the spelling bee was to bring teachers and students together because in the beginning of the year, the teacher-student relationship was severed because we were at home and there was no like real interaction with the teacher. And I know personally from my years here that that's a very important aspect of school. And I know the teachers I like, I guess, like grew up with in high school really helped me along the way. And I learned more about myself and what my goal should be in the future. So I'm very glad that the spelling bee was able to lighten the mood, show that the teachers have a really fun side of themselves and they're not that scary to the underclassmen. And we got, in the middle of the peak of the Zoom meeting that we had for the spelling bee, we had a combination of 100 teachers and students, which I thought was a big success. And then next week, now that is going to be a lot of fun for all the seniors. We have a jam-packed week from June 1st to 6th, events every day. So for June 1st, we're doing the, we're going to go into school and then tour all the elementary schools and see all the previous teachers. Then we have the NHS ceremony at night. June 2nd, we have the senior athletic banquet. June 3rd, we have our big senior banquet and cookout, which I still do not know what's happening because our class advisor is keeping it a secret. So I don't know yet, but it's going to be, teachers, they're saying it's going to be a big surprise and I'm looking forward to it, as is everybody else. I'm in many, many group chats with a bunch of seniors and they're all talking about what's going to happen and just they're really excited. Everyone has taken off work for a whole week just so they can, they don't have to miss anything. And it's, I like that because it's, we haven't had that all year. And for the first like three quarters of the school year, we didn't even see it and all of our friends. So I'm really glad the next week is going to be sociable and fun events. And to just sum up this whole year, it was unique. To say the least, it was unusual. But like through the volatile changes of fully remote to hybrid, to fully remote, hybrid, then fully back into school and seeing everybody. And all this, like this, I believe like this unique experience gave the seniors and everybody else in this school like a chance to learn a different way, see the world in a different way. And just, I think people like, without even knowing it, learned very valuable life skills, such as, I actually talked to a lot of people before this and I was trying to gather consensus on what people believe they learned. And we all agreed that we learned problem-solving skills, self-motivation, better studying habits. Independence was a really big one and also a sense of creativity from having to think outside of the box so much. And especially in the beginning of the year when we were fully remote and we were at home, it was very, very tempting, I'm sure, for everybody to just turn their camera off, lay down, set an alarm, take a nap for the whole class. And for the most part, not everyone did that and they all persevered through it. And here we are, we're at the, we have three more days of school for all the seniors. And I truly believe that this like unique experience, that if we had a regular year, not all the seniors would have learned how to be more independent, how to take their like studying seriously and everything. And I really believe that's going to help everybody in the future, in the future coming years. But again, there were obvious negatives to this year, such as the social life and how it was relatively obliterated kind of in the beginning of the year because like no one saw their friends, especially in hybrid even. It was very difficult to interact with friends and teachers. And I know for some people that did harm their like mental capacity and it made it harder for them to study and do school. But I believe that now that we're like fully back since May, that has definitely improved and I'm glad about that. I would think like college searches, that was relatively difficult when you had to apply to a college you've never seen because the colleges didn't accept tours. But it was a surprise and surprises are fun.
I'm seeing a theme here, surprise, resiliency.
That's the thing, it's just obstacles, but that's another like skill that all the seniors learned. There's obstacles thrown your way, have to overcome them. More obstacles, overcome. And that's, I think, a great quality that this year has given us a chance to learn the terrible manner, but at least we learned that. And what else? I think, I think I covered really everything I wrote.
I feel very well informed. I know, we appreciate you being here.
I just like rambled really fast.
It was great. No, we really appreciate it. Do you have any questions or comments, Mrs. Newhouse?
I just want to say thank you for the update and I love the positive all of this crazy year that we have. It's been crazy. And I'm glad for your class that we're able to have some, some kind of normalcy in some events for you guys coming up. And I hope you guys all thoroughly enjoy the next couple of weeks and congratulations on graduating.
Thank you, thank you.
Mrs. Burns?
So I have to say, one thing that you didn't touch upon that I absolutely love and thank God for Facebook is the promenade. I was so grateful and so happy to see that take place. And I think there's no more, you had a perfect night to walk across the town come in here and you guys looked so handsome, very handsome. But I also wanted to say that one thing that I think I've taken away from the senior classes, if not the underclassmen as well, is the strength and resiliency that you all showed. Not that it was easy for everybody and some had larger struggles than some, but there's a strength and resiliency on the out, on the, this side, now that we're, God willing, over it, that you should always and never forget. And you know, and I think it's so vital touching upon that, you know, when one path, when one door closes on a path, the problem solving, there's always another path to get to the end result. And it's about never giving up. It's being strong, resilient, and having confidence that you can do this and do it successfully. So I just wanted to commend you and I'm so proud of you.
Owen, my neighborhood itself.
Any other questions or comments?
I was so glad to hear that prom came off well and I want to again thank Ms. Peters and all of the people on her team who worked so hard to make that happen because it certainly didn't everywhere. And I'm really pleased that our seniors were able to have that, have that experience. I noticed when you were talking about people turning off the camera and taking a nap during class that you proudly announced that not everyone did. I'm lying that there were some.
I'm not saying there was none, but the majority.
But most people did not turn off their cameras, take a nap during class. So I guess, you know, we take our wins when we can. And but the way you described, you know, what your classes learned, you've truly had a senior year like no other. And you know, one day far in the future, you'll be able to kind of tell your own kids when they complain, "Back in my day, when I was a senior in high school, you couldn't even see your friends. We had to apply to colleges without even seeing them." So you'll always have that story to hang over their heads in the future.
I will.
Thank you, Mr. Ragsdale. Any other comments, questions for Owen? No, I think, Dr. Brand, do you want to? I couldn't tell, I was trying to gauge. Yeah, go ahead.
Owen, thanks for being here. And your comments on the activities in New Hampshire were so great, the prom, that was, had the chance to visit there. The setting was beautiful, as you described. And kudos to the staff, the many staff, Ms. Peters and those that were in attendance. And it did look like you were having fun, so that's a great thing. And thanks for all your positive comments you shared tonight with us.
Thank you. Thanks for being here and thanks for providing update and good luck to you and congratulations to your entire class. And we look forward to hearing all about your adventures in the future.
Thank you, thank you for having me.
And we'll see you, we'll see you at Honor System, we'll see you at a bunch of events coming up. We will be there to support you and cheer you on. So thank you and please extend our congratulations to your class.
Thank you so much.
All right, thanks for being here.
How could I?
Good night. All right, item six, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Brand?
Thank you. Good evening. There are three items listed tonight in the Superintendent's Report. I will point out that there are actually though, two items only in the packet. Item B and C are actually combined and I'll get to those in a moment. The first one, Special Education Determination. There is a brief notice from the Department of Education that I shared and included in the packet dated from May 10th. And this is a good news item that I wanted to take the opportunity to share with our committee and the community. This is an annual event, I guess if you will, and it's relative to the Special Education Determination of districts. There's a number of elements of regulation that go into constantly monitoring the performance of the services and programs of districts in a lot of different ways. And we've talked about many of those here over time. But as you'll note in this letter, this is the final determination 2021 for the Wilmington Public Schools. And I'm just pleased to be able to report and share with you that the final determination is indeed that Wilmington and Wilmington Public Schools meets the requirements in a number of different areas. And as the memo goes on to outline, those areas include a number of different variables or factors that they're taking a look at specifically. That includes five-year cohort graduation rates for students with disabilities, the annual dropout rate for students with disabilities, a number of pieces of data that are compiled through the public school monitoring, as well as the Problem Resolution System, Special Education data, and performance of special education on various metrics. So this is a good news report and it highlights, I think, the coherence of our programs and services within special education and a number of different variables. They take a look at a number of different pieces of data and collectively for all public school districts in the Commonwealth report out. And the four categories you can see there and meets requirements is indeed the highest category or classification, rather, and pleased to be able to share that with the community tonight. The second and third item combined, there's one memo that is included in your packet. And that comes to you from Ms. Brown-Legrand, Director of Student Support Services, and Ms. Murray, Coordinator of Behavioral Health, as well as myself. And the intention of this tonight is to give you an update on two important areas. We are, we are in most definitely the hiring season and we are actively engaged in respective searches for two areas. The first, as you'll see in the memo, is that of the Social Emotional Learning and Family Engagement Specialists. You recall that it wasn't that long ago that we were here before you to provide you with insight on what our thinking was in terms of providing additional resources going forward to help support social emotional learning and the well-being of our students as we look with an eye towards a full return next year and beyond. And you recall that we provided some detail around two positions specifically, these two positions. I'm very pleased to be able to say that with the efforts in particular of Alice and Christine, there's been an awful lot of work that has been unfolding recently. And you'll see that the highlights in terms of the applicant pool, when those positions, rather, were posted, how many applicants in total that we had, and when the corresponding interview days unfolded. We are in the process of finalizing that search and I hope to be able to share information with you as well as the community very shortly in terms of the individuals that will be hopeful joining us in the district in the near term. The second area, the second search, rather, update is the Coordinator of Special Education. And similar to that, the last category positions, just some information there that's been provided to you in terms of where we're at in the hiring process. This week, we are actively engaged in the searches and further exploring and welcoming to Wilmington, to our district, two finalists, if you will. We did, as you'll know, extended invitation to members of the community to join, and I know that at least one member here did so. The turnout wasn't strong, but we will continue for these opportunities to always engage and reach out to our community for the opportunity for them to help in this process. I also am hopeful and expect that by the next, by the time that we are next together in this room, we'll be at a place of announcing, hopefully, a candidate for that position as well. I'm happy to take questions if members of the committee have on any of those items, but if not, that concludes my report this evening.
Mrs. Burns?
Just a quick question. Do you have any insight as to how many candidates are internal within the district already for these positions?
I do not. I can follow up with you on that, but I don't have that.
Sure, thank you. It's curiosity.
I'm sorry, apologize.
No worries.
Any other questions or comments?
That was my question too.
I'm sorry, did?
Mr. Samaha?
I'm really happy to see us making progress in this, in this area with these two, especially with the Social Emotional Family Engagement Specialists. And I guess my question was, these are grant-funded positions?
Correct.
Correct? For the next school year. So we're not like, this isn't like a permanent thing, but this is one-year grant-funded position and then next year, you know, if we determine that this is positions that we need to keep in a longer span of term, we would try to add that into the budget or something like that?
A great question, yes. So a couple of things on that. We are in the process, now that we have, like all districts, recently received a fairly clear picture of what our, the totality of grants will be under the ESSR funds. My leadership team, in fact, today, we've been engaged in obviously this planning for some time and we continue to take a look at what these resources are in sum total. But for the first year, definitely, the intention of next year, rather, is to support them. And we'll, I would fully anticipate having a more expanded conversation with you as a committee around, and quite frankly, we have to for, at least for us or three for certain, in terms of more formal engagement with the community around that. So right now, year one definitively, but we're looking to see how far we might be able to stretch that out for the following year. And I think we're going to be wrestling with this in a number of different areas for the different resources that we think will be helpful to support, you know, our student bodies' full return next year. But we're also looking at this as that, you know, there's going to be a lot of things that we might not just be able to attend to in one year. And so looking beyond that. And I suspect that, you know, these positions may very well be part of our discussion as a committee around whether or not, after further evaluating their, the benefits that they hopefully will bring, whether they become a full fixture in the budget process. But that most certainly is a conversation that we would be having as part of the budget building process for future, outlying years.
Thank you.
Mr. Ragsdale?
I'm glad that we have pushed forward so quickly with this. I think that this is faster than I expected that we would be at this stage. And it's really nice to see how that's been moving along. And I also think that the number of candidates that both from an initial applicant pool stage and the number of qualified candidates that the screening committee advanced to the next stage also is promising that there's a good, healthy pool of people out there to do this work and good, qualified people.
We were, I will speak broadly, but I think that that very much holds true. I think there was a bit of surprise in a pleasant way in terms of the number of candidates and overall the quality, from what I'm told, overall the quality of the candidates in both pools was quite strong. So it's very encouraging to see. Yeah, so thank you.
Okay, great. All right, item seven, Old Business. We do not have any this evening, which brings us right to item eight, A, which is our virtual Special Olympics Game Day presentation. Ms. Diana Hill is here with us this evening. Oh, Tracy, she's coming this way. Hello, come on in.
Want to sit here?
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
Thank you for being here. It's always good to see you. We look forward to this time of year.
Thank you for having me. Okay. So yeah, so at the beginning of this school year, the Special Olympics in Massachusetts decided they were not going to have any in-person events this year. So they went ahead and made some videos so that students who were missing the Special Olympics experience could participate in a game day event of sorts in the comfort of their own home. And I took those videos and put them into a PowerPoint presentation so that, I guess, slides presentation that I sent out to all the liaisons that I have at the different schools in the district so they could share it with sub-separate teachers in the district. So any families that wanted to participate could follow through this slides presentation and have their own at-home game day experience. And so this is the slideshow presentation that they got. The register here is a link that would bring them to a Google form where they could sign up and fill out their student's information. This was required to have a deadline because the Special Olympics is going to look at that form and send in medals so that every student who registered will have a medal waiting for them. So once they participate and fill out their results, they will be presented with a participation medal. So we had 27 students register. I guess it's not, I haven't received the medals yet, so you know, if somebody's watching this and they didn't even hear about it and they want to jump in, get it done by this week and we can sneak you in there. But yeah, we had 13 at the West, 10 at the high school. There were two students at the North, one at Shaw Sheen and one at Wildwood. And I did write in there, although there's a lot of, a lot of reading in here, but if people are doing this at home and they have siblings that want to participate, they can sign up as partners because we don't really have the ability to have peers for partners. So yeah, click on the register here, you can get it in by this Friday and I will sneak you in there. So then as you go through, typically, the middle and high schoolers would participate in one track event and one field event for competition. They receive a gold, silver, or bronze. This year, it's just going to be participation medals. So we're just asking everybody to pick one track event, one field event. You can click on these boxes and it will bring you to the slide that will tell you about those events. I'm just going to be clicking through the slideshow today, so you won't see the interactive part of this. But there are also optional activities, so you know, you do your two activities that you, that you're submitting results for. Maybe you haven't had quite enough of the Special Olympics experience, so there's six other events that you can participate in optionally if you would like. So as we go along, the videos aren't coming through. But at home, there is a video on each of these pages that you can click on. It's someone from the Special Olympics who explains the event. They tell you how you can do this at home. If you don't have a measuring tape to measure out 10 meters, they just say, "Take 10 really big steps." And that will be close enough to 10 meters. And you might need someone to help you time yourself. And then once you have your results, you can submit those results by clicking on that little square right there. And it brings you to a Google form that will send those results to me, which I can then send off to the Special Olympics. So there's a 10-meter roll, walk, or run. Oh, there's the video. Okay, great. And then there's a 50-meter and a 100-meter. So they're all kind of the same idea. You can pick which distance is appropriate for your abilities. So they're all kind of the same idea. You can pick which, which distance is appropriate for your abilities. And, and then when you go to submit your results, you just pick which one you did and how long it took you. And, and then I'll receive those. So then for the field events, there's a softball or tennis ball throw. This is pretty standard from what we see at the, the game day event. And again, results can be submitted right there. The other option for a field event is the standing long jump, which this gentleman shows how you can do that in your living room. And so, yeah, it can really be done anywhere as long as you have space and you're not going to break the TV. So then some optional activities, we've got bouncing a ball on a racket. And they really, they say any, any sort of thing that you can, if you have a ball that can bounce and something you can bounce it off of, you're going to time yourself to see how many times you can bounce it on that racket. These are not being submitted just because they're, they're really just for fun. So, you know, if it seems like people want to submit their results, I can quickly put a form up there. It's the beauty of these Google things. You can just change it on one end and everybody gets the changes right away. So push-ups, how many push-ups can you do in 30 seconds? And also a plank, how long can you hold a plank, which is harder than it looks? Squats to a chair. So this is just kind of using the chair to, to show you how, how far down you should be squatting just so you're not hurting yourself doing this, but you're not actually trying to sit in the chair. You're just getting really close to the chair and then standing back up and seeing how many of those you can do in 30 seconds. And then a vertical jump, this one, you kind of need a partner to help you measure how high you're jumping. And he recommends that you do it near a wall, so you can kind of put a piece of tape on the wall and see if you can jump above that tape. It's helpful to have somebody else to, to see how high you are jumping because that's hard to judge on your own. And then you can measure from the floor up to the point that you were able to jump. And then the shuttle run is kind of like the, we have a relay race during game day, but this is just sort of setting up your own two points where you're going to run from one to the next and then back to the other one and see how quickly you can do it. And anybody who is participating, you can do these activities multiple times and submit your best results. If you do it once and submit it and then do it again and submit better results, I will figure it out. If I see the same name multiple times, I will submit your best time. And, yeah, and then that's the end of the presentation. So we thought it would be a nice, a nice way to just get people back into the idea of, of doing a game day. Because, you know, we, I think everyone was a little disappointed when, when everything got canceled last year. But we're hoping that next year, we will have our official fourth annual in-person game day, assuming things keep going on the up and up like they are.
That's wonderful. Thank you so much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Are there questions or comments? Mr. Fenely?
You answered my question. I was curious how many people were signed up, but I just wanted to say thank you. I mean, I was disappointed that there was nothing last year. And while it's not, you know, in person like I think everybody would like, I've been to a few of these. They're great events. And so I'm, I'm glad to see something is back. So thank you. And I hope it's, you know, is as enjoyable for the participants as it can be being virtual, but thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Mrs. Burns?
I do, I know with the, the time and efforts and work that goes on to hosting these events in person. And, you know, I'm thankful that, you know, there was a solution for this spring, but it, it can't go without saying the, the amount of work and fundraising and donations that you and your team work so hard for these, you know, for our students to participate, for them to learn that they, yes, they can do it and be successful. And, and it's not just the, the events, it's the, the dancing, it's the, the photo booth. It's, it's, and it's the, it's the student volunteers, the peers that are there supporting these students. I think that's just one of the best, next to the events and winning, one of the best connections that these, that our students can come together and body out and, you know, and be, you know, successful both, you know? And I just, that what, that couldn't be possible without the hard work and the planning that you do to arrange this and organize all these events that go on simultaneously throughout the day. And I just want to thank you most sincerely from the bottom of my heart for the, the work and the time involved in, in doing so for the kids.
Yeah, I do it because I, I love it. I love, I love to see the pictures afterwards too.
It's very obvious. It's very obvious.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Thank you for being here. Thanks for all your work. Thanks for giving us the update.
Thank you to all of you. I know you do a lot of behind-the-scenes work. I appreciate that.
We're excited to see the results. Well, I hope we'll get an update.
Yeah.
Get an update.
Sure.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
All right. Thanks for being here. Have a good night. Item 8B, Doug Flutie Autism Technology Grant, Dr. Brand?
Sure, thank you. In your packet is an item from, really from Dr. Quirk ultimately, as from a principal at the middle school. Recently, they received an award of, or grant rather, sorry, of $2,500. And the, the intention behind that is an award from the Doug Flutie Junior Foundation for Autism. And they are hopeful to acquire iPads for use with each of the students in, in the transitions program, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. You can see the additional information that's included and outlined in the memo. And this is here tonight as part of new business because of the amount that it's in and looking for your hopeful move to accept the Doug Flutie Autism Technology Grant. Happy to take any questions if you folks have.
Good, thank you. Mrs. Plowman, sorry. I think I go to the outside first. I'm sorry, Mrs. Plowman.
No discussion. I was just going to make a motion.
Oh, okay. Mrs. Burns?
So two questions. If, if we can just touch upon how these iPads will be used, just for curiosity's sake, not for justification. And I had another follow-up question that I had emailed Dr. Brand on. So are these iPads used for communication or what's the intent?
Well, I know there are. I'm not sure honestly with specific to this particular grant, but I know there, there are so many different apps that are really helpful and valuable with communication and particularly. So I can follow up and get more information specifically, but I believe that's what the intent is.
Thank you. And, and there's something that came up about two years ago that I, I would like to just bring back, bring forth to in hopes that you may be interested at some point in investigating. At one of the, the last MASCE conference, I did see a workshop on augmented reality smart glasses. Are you familiar with?
Yes.
Oh, okay. And I know that North Reading was piloting that program. And I know it's a little expensive, but I was just absolutely fascinated by the technology behind this. And, and the opportunity could give our, those students who aren't so, you know, social cues and facial expressions are, are not their strong suit, but can help them, guide them. And I didn't know if you'd be, if you had any interest, because I would love to see what this technology could mean for our district if we could find a revenue source to pilot the program and things of that sort. I think I might have some contact information, but I can, I can certainly look into my records. But I didn't know if it might be something that the, the district might investigate a little further because I think it's amazing. And the way it collects data so that staff doesn't have to record anything. It goes right into an app. I, I just think is another time-saving tool for staff to focus on students and that, you know, that aspect of collecting data in that realm, for that.
It's impressive technology. The, my former district, we piloted it when they, before it was even released to the public.
Right.
So we had some experience with it when it was just getting off the ground. So I actually had a chance to try it myself and, and all of our school committee members got to wear, try the goggles. And we did use it with a couple of students. The technology has come a long way from what I can gather over the last couple of years. It was honestly a little bit of a learning curve for us when we started because it worked really well in demo mode, but then when we actually had to use it in real life with students, it was a little tougher. It involves a lot of training and professional development to be able to use it effectively. But I also have been told that the product itself has been revised over time with feedback from, at the end users. I do have a contact that I could reach out to to get more information, so I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure, great. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right. All right, Mrs. Plowman, back to you.
Okay. I'm going to accept the Doug Flutie Autism Technology Grant Award in the amount of $2,500.
Is there a second, Mr. Fenely? All in favor? That is one, two, three, four, five, six, one abstention. One abstention. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item 8C, Summer Academy Enrollment Updates. Ms. Elliott?
Thank you. I'm happy to report that we've made significant progress in planning for our summer programming. And even from the time that this memo was submitted, there's been a lot that's taken place since. So I'll give you the most up-to-date version. We have hired actually a program director and all of the elementary teachers for the elementary program. So at the time when I wrote this, we were still finalizing interviews, but we had, the program coordinator is a Wilmington staff member as well as six of the eight teachers are Wilmington staff members. We did hire two outside candidates for additional positions. We are planning to run two sections of kindergarten, two sections of first grade, and then one section of grades two, three, four, and five. We are able to accept every student that applied. Parents were notified on Monday that everybody has been accepted, that has applied to be in the program. We hired two high school, well, a high school and a middle school, so two secondary program directors for the summer school program. Ms. Peters, Dr. Quirk, the two coordinators and myself met today to launch into planning and they are full speed ahead. They have actually already begun updating the website for the summer school program to reflect current time this year. And they are working right now to gather the names of students and information about students who may benefit from this opportunity this summer. I'll be reaching out, so they're organizing that as we speak. And families at the secondary level will receive some type of notification if it's, if it's, if their child is encouraged to participate. So more to come on the details there. They are looking at the student needs in order to determine the actual staffing. We did have a decent amount of teachers who expressed interest in teaching at the secondary level this summer. So I am pretty confident that we'll be able to staff based on what the need is. If need be, we will again look outside to staff it if we don't have enough internal staff members. So we are well underway in both. We've ordered curriculum for the elementary level and we are, you know, getting ready to, we will be hosting that program completely at Shaw Sheen Elementary School. We're able to have enough space to have it in one building, which certainly makes it easier in a lot of ways, particularly for parents who might have two different grades, students in different grades and don't have to drop off, pick up in two different buildings. So that is huge. We will have, we're in the process right now of hiring a nurse to be on duty during that time. So we only have to think about that in one building versus two. And program coordination certainly helps by having it in one building. So that is all underway and I think we're moving along nicely, so.
Thank you.
Sure.
Questions or comments, Mrs. Plowman?
When you mentioned you're sort of in the process of determining what the needs might be, can you give us a sense of what the data points are or what are the ways that they are assessing that? Or how are, how are people determining where the need is?
So at the secondary level, summer school is typically, the, is, is around credit recovery. So students who are at risk of failing or who are, you know, not, so particularly at the high school level, it's typically for credit recovery in that point, in, in those grades. But it, it is also open to others for remediation as well. So communication will go out to everybody. Anybody who's interested can, can apply to participate. But we will be reaching out through students based on guidance counselors and principal recommendations around students who may be at risk or have, or even if they are going to pass, but just pass, that we would recommend that they would participate.
This may be too preliminary to answer, so, but I don't know the way that the summer programming typically works at the secondary level, but whereas the elementary, it's sort of nine to 12 and it's sort of, it'll do curriculum across different subject areas. At the secondary level, do they specialize in sort of math? Like if my kid needs math instruction or, you know, writing instruction, can you explain a little bit?
Sure, great question. So we are looking right now at running a morning and an afternoon session. And we will, so when we're gathering the information about what students' needs are, it's really about what courses are they at risk of not passing? So once we know that a student, you know, needs, you know, a particular course, we're going to try and seek out a teacher who can teach that course. So we'll try to make that match. If there's a student who is at risk of not passing two different courses, we'll try, the, the scheduling gets a little tricky, but we want to try and schedule, you know, if they need a math course, we're going to schedule a math in the morning and the ELA English class in the afternoon so that they can participate in both. So we'll do our best to try and put that, those pieces of the puzzle together to make sure everybody has that option. Some students may only take class that's being offered in the afternoon and some might just take one that's being offered in the morning, or they could do both. Does that help answer?
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Mr. Rexton?
Just to clarify, so for all the grades that are listed here, this is all for current year? And who, because they're going to be covering, you know, covering and going over the, you know, this school year's learning standards and curriculum, correct?
Yes. So there, this, the grade the students are currently in now is the grade they would participate in this program in the summer. It'll be review.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Mr. Samaha?
I'll just say, I'm, I'm really happy that what's going to be able to be offered to everybody who wants it. You know, I think that's just a really great thing, so happy, happy to see that.
Me too. It's always a puzzle trying to make sure you've got the staffing to match the need, so it's, I'm excited to be able to run it. And I've, you know, had conversations with many of the teachers already at the elementary level because they've been identified. And they're excited. They're really looking forward to it. And they're looking forward to having, you know, some different students. So some of them might be students that they know and others might be news, you know, new to them. But to have the opportunity to have students in person and, and really kind of solidify those skills and make it fun and engaging for them as well.
I had a quick vote.
Sorry, go ahead.
I did, but go ahead.
No, no, go ahead. I started, don't, I don't, I talk enough. Thank you.
One of my questions, I guess, would be that the, like the, the current, like COVID protocols that are in place now, would likely be extended unless Desi says we're going to do some summer school guidance? Or is there, is there a summer school guidance staying?
The guidance, yeah, the guidance is to follow suit with what the school year guidance has been at this juncture, in case there's anything different. But we will certainly, you know, pay close attention to all of that as it gets closer. But we plan to follow all the same protocols we would during the typical school day.
And I'm sorry, is one of their, is, is one of my concerns too is, is the, the temperatures in, in the, in the buildings too. I know especially when there was some guidance about the fans not being on, like low speed or whatever. Not knowing Shaw Sheen, although I know that the Woodman Street gets extremely hot, so I'm just.
So we are going to ensure we have fans in every space and we can use fans as long, you know, with windows. Obviously, the window will be open, but, so, and we will encourage, if, if the weather is cooperating for, you know, breaks outside, that kind of thing. We're trying to use as many of the first-floor classrooms as we can. It's a little bit cooler down there, so it's definitely a challenge. But we're going to, and we're done by noon, so hopefully, you know, as the mornings are a little bit cooler.
Thank you.
Mrs. Burns?
I just had a quick question and it might be a little cart before the horse, go figure. Will they be doing, typically in the summer, they do that summer book reading report with, will that be going on this summer?
It's on next month's, uh, next meeting's agenda.
Great, thank you.
Summer reading update. And I'm assuming that's what you're referring to, right? The summer reading?
Yes, and they usually list the, the. Yes, and they usually list the books of which students could, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Ragsdale?
One final thing is that I think it's great that so much of the staffing of this program is going to be with Wilmington teachers. That, you know, nothing wrong with going outside to, you know, to get good people too, but it's nice that we'll be able to use our own staff to do the majority of this work.
Agreed.
I just had one quick question there. I just got a few comments from families saying that sometimes that morning time was a little insufficient if they were working full-time. Was there any, was there any sort of collaboration with CARES or the playground group that we could sort of, they could start with us in the morning and then move to CARES in the afternoon?
I haven't had that conversation, I certainly can.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right.
I'll just, if I may, I'll transition to the next one, and just to take the opportunity to thank Ms. Elliott for her leadership. Eight weeks ago, this was barely an idea, although we had a sense that something was coming. And yes, it is the case that we are responding to the lead and the direction that Desi would like districts to take. From all that we're gathering, from, and there's no canvassing of what other districts are all doing, but I think in many respects, we have a fledgling sense that we are going above and beyond in the program offerings. And although Ms. Elliott used the word "we" often in her, in her descriptions tonight, it's really been her, on top of managing, planning for next year, and schedules and calendars, professional development and negotiations, and a list that is long as anyone's arm in here, she's taken this on and done so really herself. So I want to thank her for all of her leadership and coordination for this. Middle School Program Review is the next item, and I'll transition to that. There is a brief item in your packet that we're circling back to. We talked not that long ago about Middle School Program Review, and I want to, I want to thank one of the members here for putting forth the idea to consider, and I've done so a little bit more around the idea of enlisting a consultant to help, help lead and move this project forward. In no way was that an idea that I had originally when I proposed this as a goal to you, the Middle School Program Review Committee, that is, and the work, I believe, I think you know this, I believe 100% in this work and work that I need to play a pivotal role in. But after giving some more thought to the benefits that a consultant could add here, I appreciate the suggestion or thought, and it's one that I'm bringing to you for your consideration, that I think that this would provide a lot of benefits, as I briefly outlined here. It's not dissimilar to, as was suggested, and thank you to Mr. Ragsdale, around the strategic plan. It was something that emerged as a goal that I proposed, and of course, we enlisted, for those who recall and were on the committee then, a consultant. And I ultimately also think that the way that this has been positioned, the work here, ultimately culminating in recommendations that would be brought forth to myself as the superintendent and yourself as a school committee, I think that the additional benefit of a third party, if you will, could be an important complement. So I'm here this evening to seek your consideration and hope that you would consider authorizing the district to utilize funds for the purposes of bringing on board a third-party consultant to help lead and coordinate the work of the Middle School Program Review Committee. Happy to take any questions.
Mrs. Burns?
So two quick questions, if you can answer. I know that I had reached out to you to find out what the budgetary costs, the range you anticipate these consultants, and I know you gave the between, I'm sorry, $10,000 and $15,000 for the service. Can you tell me, generally speaking, I know that you can't speak exactly to it, you know, before, speaking to the consultants directly, what is that, what would that cover? What, I'm not very familiar with consultants in this genre, and I just didn't know, how long would they stay, what's, you know, just an idea of what that looks like, too.
So, you know, in many respects, I think it will, it would mirror the work of a strategic planning endeavor, that kind of project. And so what I envision that this person would be able to do is to meet with our group co-leaders, the three co-leaders, meet with the individual groups, meet with the groups as a whole, to be able to ensure their alignment, to ensure that their work products are consistent, to help, you know, to help vet the development of sort of each stage. So research stage is one thing, and obviously helping to develop a report that can become public, can become socialized, and pull together all of the work of, you know, a multitude of obviously individuals who are working together. So that's one aspect. Certainly, the second aspect is then to be able to help, I would envision, develop specific outreach to our stakeholders. You recall that this work is, at its heart, has gathering data and information and feedback. You know, if this is what research suggests should be in place for, for service to young adolescents in education, how does that actually align with what we do have? So the development of research tools and helping bring that together, and then pulling that data all together, making sense of it, and then working with the group to ultimately develop recommendations. So, so it's, I think as I think about all that, there's a lot of work that, you know, happens in incremental, it wouldn't be full days by any means. It's behind the scenes largely, a couple of hours here, a couple of hours there, that figure that you shared. That comes to mind, I think, is probably possible in the sense that when I think about all that work that I just described, I could see that being in the range of possibly 10 days in total, maybe it's less. But, you know, I think there's a lot of work here, for sure. And so the consultancy day ranges that we work with generally can range, you know, $700 a day to $1,000 a day, along those lines.
So would there be any support as, sort of support as the implementation of the recommendations?
That, that's not what I'm recommending to you here tonight. It's the, it's this, it's this program review as a whole, leading to the presentation that comes before yourself as a committee and myself as superintendent.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that clarification.
Mr. Ragsdale?
I think that also that some of the, this is a little bit of a, my, you know, my understanding is that this kind of is a little bit of a back and forth between the people that you approach, that you have an idea of what you're looking to get out of it, and as you talk to people who might be available for this type of work, then they also are able to come with their expertise and their proposals. And so the, sort of the actual shape of the work, you know, comes together through a little bit of back and forth, that you don't just kind of put on a shelf, this is what we want, and then you're the one who's going to do it.
Yes, and if, one thing I forgot to also add is I, I would certainly hope and anticipate that this work, as it progresses, will not just be outreach via survey alone, or that sort of tool, but also possible small-group forums or community forums or the like, something along those lines. And I don't have a crystal-clear picture of that, but I would certainly imagine that that would be. So this person would be instrumental in helping coordinate that, let's just say, pulling together a group of students, or pulling together a group of staff, or parent guardians. This person would be leading that work, would be my proposal.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Smaha?
I guess I'll just make the comment that I'm really happy about this, and I think having an outside perspective, I think somebody who's not sort of, you know, either, either, you know, a parent or a part of that, that school community, that outside view, I think, is really, really, can be really, really important and valuable, so I'm happy to see this.
Thank you.
Mrs. Plowman?
Just thinking back on Jay, I think that objectivity in this process, I, I think that investing in understanding what's happening at our middle school is, should be a priority for the district. Every single child that lives in our community who's in our public school system is going to pass through the middle school. And they're incredibly formative years, and I just think that this investment is, is really valuable. And I also, I just think about the reality of the next couple of years with our district really focusing on a recovery from COVID. And I worry that that will be a distraction from, you know, what the steering committee is sort of tasked with. And I think that an outside consultant not only brings an objective perspective, but really kind of helps us keep our eye on that work. So I'm glad, I'm glad to be talking about this too.
Thank you.
Mr. Fenelly?
And I would just add quickly, I'm glad to see that we've sort of reconsidered this idea and brought it forward. I was part of the strategic planning group and working with that consultant to sort of, to your point, Dr. Brand, bring everybody together and sort of lead that process, I thought was really helpful and insightful. And so I think knowing that the work to be done at the middle school, it makes a lot of sense, and I would support it, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Ragsdale?
I'm also strongly in support of this. It seems to be the way of the room, so I won't go on it at great length. But when, the other meeting when Mrs. Plowman mentioned it, the gears began to turn, and I had and just said, yeah, that, that makes sense. And, you know, at the end of this process, with a good consultant, you end up, you know, not just hopefully with good recommendations and a good plan for us to, you know, for us to look at as a school committee, but something that is truly ours. And that, I think, was one of the big benefits of the way that the strategic plan unfolded, is that it wasn't someone coming in who then said, ah, here's what you need to do in your district, and here's your plan, and then handing us a plan, but guiding us through the process so we could see ourselves what we needed. And then I think that, I'm hopeful that that will be the same process that we're able to go through with this program review, that, you know, in the end, it's us still owning the work and recognizing what needs to be done and making our own choices.
I too, can I, can I talk?
No, that was just a point of order. That's okay.
I didn't cut you off.
I know, no, I'm just, I'm asking if it's okay. I too am very much in support of this, and I would just ask for, not regular updates, but I would love to receive sort of when we, when you do find the consultant you've worked out what it's going to look like. I would love to see what that, what that looks like. Sort of not the details, but just sort of a sketch of what's it going to look like moving forward, so that we have a sense as to what to expect when, before the presentation comes before us. Mrs. Burns?
So I just wanted, just wanted to add, so for this motion, should we also motion for something under, just saying that at the, no more than 15,000, you know, or 20, I don't know whatever the will of the board, and I want to make sure that in searching for the right consultant for our district to give, you know, Superintendent Brand that flexibility financially, if, you know, and that's something I wanted, we always touch upon Paul, when we talk about that, that is a part of the motion for this piece in pursuing, that we, we do nothing more than 18,000 without, you know what I mean, having to come to the, something like, I don't know, I'm just throwing that out to you, is putting a cap on the top or something.
How do others feel about that?
I just don't want any surprises on budgetary matters that hadn't been initially figured into our current budget. That was just, you know, just a pulse.
Is it appropriate that if it seems to be outside the range that Dr. Brand has indicated, that I come back to the committee?
Outside of the 10 to 15 range. Or no more, I would say no more than.
Are you comfortable with that range? Do you think that like a little?
Like no more than 15 or 16?
I am, yes, and that's, so yes to that, number one, and then number two, and forgive me for not mentioning this, but we, we do have allocations within the strategic, within an umbrella of the strategic plan that we have not utilized in whole because of the circumstances of this year. And so I think that although this will span into next year, we can certainly, right, so. Yes, and we have the strategic plan money in next year's budget as well, too. And I would absolutely argue that this is a element of the strategic plan, and looking at, you know, holistically, the educational experience pre-K to 12, that's certainly within the plan as well.
Not questioning, I just, just wanted to, you know, be able to, it should be questioned where, you know, where the money's coming from, and that it was a part of the budget, a budget line item, you know, strategically linked to the, you know, strategic plan. I just want to be able to respond to somebody should they inquire, well, where's this money coming from? That it was already earmarked, you know what I mean, as opposed to, but, you know, public money is still public money. So I just want to make sure that we're just clear and transparent with that spending as well. However, however you feel the motion should go off, just so we, you know.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Plowman, do you have something else?
No, thank you.
Okay, all right. So I think we all agree that this is, this is vital, this is a part of our strategic plan, and so we're in full support of this. The motion reads, move to authorize the superintendent of schools to engage a consultant to coordinate the work of the Wilmington Middle School Program Review Committee. I'm not sure we need to add the cap here, but I would say that if it were to exceed your range that you provided in this meeting, that you would bring it back to us.
Certainly.
Is that fair?
Yeah, I don't think we need to amend the motion.
Okay.
We can just have that understanding.
All right, so I just read that, but would someone like to officially make the motion? Mrs. Burns?
I would like, I think we're doing two, two votes, yes, one to amend the original.
No, no, I don't think we need to amend it.
No, we're not going to amend it. We'll read it as is, but we have an understanding that if it were to be more than the range he provided to us earlier, that it would have to come back for another vote.
So I make the motion to authorize the superintendent of schools to engage a consultant to coordinate the work of the Wilmington Middle School Program Review Committee with a range of 10?
No, no range, we already said it, yeah, we're good.
Oh, I didn't know that'd be part of the motion.
I think we're good, yeah, at least an understanding, so if it were to exceed, that it would come back. You'll second, Mr. Ragsdale?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, all in favor? That is unanimous, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, and 8E, we have nurses' negotiations.
Yes, as mentioned, thank you, in the memo, we were, the district was recently contacted to commence contract negotiations for a successor contract for our school nurses. The current contract, as noted, is set to expire on August 31st, 2021. So here this evening, both to share that information and news with you, and in light of that, also share with you the fact that we are in turn seeking volunteers. I understand that typically it would be two school committee members to serve as part of the negotiation subcommittee with, for this contract.
And, I don't know, Paul, if you know what that commitment, when it would be exactly, what time of day, what, we have a sense of when? And is it happening starting now, or is it happening in the summer?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I know we'll have to contact them and try to get some dates that work for them and for whoever in the school committee. They typically, that group has been later in, after school, so, you know, 3:30, so that's typically what it's been.
And to be completed by this August date?
Well, the contract expires at the end of August, yeah. Hopefully, yes, that's the goal, to get it completed by then.
Yeah, I figured. I'm just trying to get a sense of what people should expect in terms of time commitment.
Would these be in-person negotiations? That be the understanding?
Probably, right?
I would hope so, yeah.
All right, do we have any volunteers? Maybe someone who hasn't served on a negotiation subcommittee who's anxious to get in and see what it's like, Mr. Fenelly?
I'll do this one, sure.
Thank you. Anybody else? We need one more. And, no, MJ, no.
Was it something I said?
You and David are already serving on negotiations. I mean, you can, but I'm just trying to help you out.
Let's put it this way, I would love to see somebody else step up, but it's a negotiating, another negotiating team, union that I've, I've done several times. I would love to give it away, because it's, I'm in a transition in my employment right now to it's, the practice I work at, and I, I, you know, I anticipate the summer's going to be a little bit rocky, and I just, not sure about my commitment, but I think it's, I would love to give it to anybody who can take it, but I, you know, just to serve the second piece, I'll, I'll do it if no one else will step up.
Okay, all right.
They're a lovely, lovely, they're a lovely group to negotiate with, so.
Is there anyone who would like?
I would, I would be interested, however, if it's in person and it's like going to be like after school, I don't think I could.
The timing would not work for your schedule, yeah. And would it be possible?
Well, it's after school, though, if we're trying to get it done by August 21st, I guess.
Well, but school ends in, what, two or three weeks?
Yeah, there's only.
So the aspect is twofold, because if, depending upon in contract, the first two, first meeting or two, which is sometimes just ground rules, can be done through Zoom. And then once school closes, I don't know what your commitment is, summer programming, but if you have summer program responsibilities in your district, but, I don't know, just throwing it out there to you.
So maybe, I mean, Jay, do you want to say yes, and then I'll serve as an alternate? And so when you can't, if you can't go, I can fill in for you? Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense, because I haven't been on any negotiating subcommittees. Yeah, summer is a lot of story.
We get to that point, but, you know, if we're still going then, so.
Okay, all right, well, we'll, thank you, Jesse.
Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you. Thank you for volunteering, Jesse and Jay.
Love you, Jess.
Thank you.
And I'll be in...
Thank you, Jesse, for volunteering without caveats. First time, Fred.
Okay, do we, are we good on that? Yes, okay, fantastic. All right, item nine, we have subcommittee reports, are there any subcommittee reports this evening? Mrs. Plowman, she's been busy.
I can report in on the WEF Board of Directors meeting, that happened recently on May 18th. Just some quick takeaway points from that meeting, Robert noted that there's a decreasing number of applicants for tech grants, so I think they're going to be looking at, just sort of trying to understand that a little bit. Actually, Christine offered some explanation around perhaps it was because of federal grant money due to COVID and being able to provide Chromebooks, et cetera, for students, so, but, but that was just something that was noted. Just a reminder to, to community members with regard to the Bay State textile bins that are outside of the schools, which is, which is a really great source of funding for the district, to not overflow the bins, because I guess that has been really problematic, so just a little shout-out about that. And to just advocate that the WEF is really looking for people to volunteer and to become part of, to be, become part of that process, and people can go to the website to learn a little bit more about that, whether you want to try to, you know, become a, a board member, or just a volunteer to help at different various events, but there is a great need for community involvement and volunteerism for that, so I promised that I would just speak to that a little bit in our committee meeting this evening. And if, you know, what's holding people back is scheduling, there's a lot of discussion about flexibility and looking at that, and trying to really work with volunteers to make it more possible for them to participate. And that is my subcommittee report.
Thank you. Are there other subcommittee, do you have another one? No. Are there other subcommittee reports?
Can, Mr. Fenely, you want to, or you want me to?
Please.
Okay, so, Mr. Fenely and I are participating on the Town Hall School Administration Building project. We had three meetings, the first meeting, we, we had six applicants for a designer, that was the last work we had done. Six firms applied for designer services, we whittled that down to four, we interviewed all four of them, two last week and two last night. The committee, which is made up of, as I mentioned, Mr. Fenely, myself, members of the permanent building committee, Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, we selected a firm, and now the town manager will negotiate with that firm to hopefully get a contract, and then from there, there'll be additional work as we move toward the, the site selection process, so that's where we stand right now.
Thank you. Thank you for attending those as well. Any other subcommittee reports? Item 10, correspondence, Mrs. Burns?
None this evening.
Okay. Item 11, we have future school committee dates, May 27th is tomorrow evening, we have the Wilmington Middle School Band Concert at 6:30 on the Middle School Ball Field. May 28th, we have the Wilmington Public Schools Annual Virtual Art Show, that's opening day. May 31st, we have Wilmington High School Marching Band Parade Ceremony, 10:00 a.m., Wildwood Ceremony, Wildwood Cemetery. June 1st, we have National Honor Society Ceremony, Wilmington High School, at 6:30. We also have the Elementary Strings Concert, grades four and five, 6:30 on the Town Common. June 4th, we have the Class of 21 Scholarship Night, Wilmington High School, 6:30. June 6th, Class of 21 Graduation, 1:00 p.m. June 8th, we have the Underclass Awards in the Wilmington High School Gymnasium at 6:30. June 9th, we have our regular session meeting here, 7:00 p.m., and June 23rd is our last meeting in June. Unless anyone has any other dates or events we missed? Mr. Rexton?
Not a new event, but I just wanted to encourage people to get out to some of these concerts, we went to the Middle School Strings Concert last week, just outside, just outside this building, and it was just fantastic to see the kids being able to play together for the first time in so long in this type of event, and I wanted to give big props to Ms. Perkins for putting that all together and leading them through, it was just, it was outstanding to see them play together again.
Absolutely.
Highly recommended.
It's very exciting, and I love, we have our own concerts on the common, it's like out in the park, so it's quite lovely.
Last night, the jazz band was out there, it was a wonderful night, up there, and a nice turnout, and they sounded great, bar for the motorcycle or two that went by. Aside from that, it was great.
And we had our, our theater group perform this weekend, so it is very exciting to see all the, the Facebook posts and the pictures and the tweets with everything that's kind of back up and running in the district, so we thank, we thank everyone at the leadership side, and we thank the teachers and the staff making this possible for our students to have a really full, exciting end of the year. I think that is it, so just a final motion to adjourn. Mrs. Burns, is there a second? Mr. Smaha, all in favor? That is unanimous. Thanks, good night, everyone.
Good night.
WCTV, connecting our community, WCTV, connecting our community, Wilmington, Massachusetts.